Okay, so all those spare pens that she always leaves out, that I take one. She always... I'm a little angry about it because Toby always leaves out these pens. I'll take a pencil, but it'll be fine. I just need to be able to write stuff.
Yeah, I don't know what.
It doesn't matter, can I borrow this pencil?
You can borrow that pencil. You are good. Okay, well.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the rescheduled Gulf Shore City Board of Education Work Session for September 11th at 4:00 PM. Joey, if you'll please note, the meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. We're going to start with an announcement, and as I'm sure everyone's aware, Gulf Shore City Schools lost a valued member this, just recently. Dylan Aiken, 2014 graduate of Piedmont High School as valedictorian, and 2018 graduate of the very distinguished Air Force Academy, left us way too early. And our hearts go out to the Aiken family, to Matt and Sandra, to all those that love Dylan who left us too early. A man who served his country with pride. And I don't know what to say, Matt, other than we love you, we love your family. We're saddened.
Thank you.
With that said, we will move forward to our staff wave makers' presentation, the first of... First of all, everybody, welcome to our new Wave Center for Learning. We're very excited to be here in this venue. We feel it's more intimate. I have several board members who are glad to get off the proverbial high horse at the dais at the city council. So, we're glad to be here. This is an incredible facility. We'd like to thank the city and Noel Hand, and especially a big kudos to Chad Green for pulling this together. He took over the project when it was well on its way and stayed in the stirrups until we got it done. I mean, it's a beautiful facility. We're going to have professional development in this room. We will have an open house in the near future once the entire punch list is finished and Chad gives us the thumbs up that it's presentable in every nook and cranny. Then, we're going to have an open house and invite the public to come see it. But this is a dedication to the faculty and staff here at Gulf Shore City Schools. We know that some of you have been in substandard conditions because of our overcrowding. We now have 18 to 20 administrative offices. We have conference rooms. This room will be utilized for professional development. We have a wonderful outdoor area. It's just a great testament to the way that this board feels about our employees and the fact that you deserve the very best. And we think that this building exemplifies that. And we're proud to have it done, Chad. Thanks for your hard work. Noel, thanks for all the city continually does. The landscaping, the infrastructure, the ingress egress, everything that happened that the city makes possible. We could never thank you enough, Noel, for everything you do. And Dr. Aiken, I just think it's a wonderful facility, and you guys have done a wonderful job.
Yeah, we're excited. And I think our wave architects did a great job. The building has turned out wonderful. And you can't say enough about Chad. And I think Chad wondered what he had gotten himself into because it's been a challenge at the end. But then Noel, when the landscaping had to be done, like his guys were here the next day doing it and paving the roads. So, I appreciate it, Noel.
All right, with that said, welcome, everybody, once again. And the most exciting part of our meetings are when we get to recognize wave makers, those that really stand out above the rest as being designated and nominated as a wave maker. And our work sessions are when we recognize staff wave makers. And at our regularly scheduled meetings, which will be next week, we'll recognize students from each of the three campuses. So, with that said, we're going to start with our elementary school wave makers. Dr. Harrison will handle the plaque presentation, and Mrs. Kelly Walker is going to handle Gulf Shores Elementary School. Kelly, you have the floor.
For the elementary school, we actually have two. Two elementary wave makers. And the first one is Mrs. McCarty. So, Mrs. McCarty, come on up. She was nominated by Mrs. McKinnon. And Mrs. McKinnon says, "Christy has led her students to the highest ELA proficiency scores in the school with an impressive 97% proficiency rate. Through her dedication, innovation, teaching strategies, and unwavering support, her students, for her students, she has a remarkable standard of excellence. Christie's ability to inspire and motivate students to reach their fullest potential makes her a true leader in our school. Christie McCarty is a true wave maker." And my daughter had her last year, and I can attest because I got to see close up how amazing she was at caring individually for every single student in her class, getting to know them. And I will have to tell Isla that I see Chad because she will be very upset that I get to meet him first. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, Kelly, you've got another elementary school recipient. Nick is going to handle that.
Kelly has passed the torch on to me. So, Pam Parker, come on. All right, Ms. Pam Parker was nominated by Dana Walker. And Dana says this about Pam. "Pam has guided her students to an exceptional 95% proficiency in math. Her commitment to building strong mathematical foundations, fostering a love of learning, and supporting individual student growth has had a direct impact on her students' success. Pam's dedication and excellence in the classroom make her a role model for effective teaching. Pam Parker is the epitome of a wave maker." Welcome back home.
All right, congratulations, elementary school recipients. Next is our middle school recipient, and that's going to be handled by Mr. Frank Malone. Frank, you have the floor.
Okay, I am honored to announce our middle school wave maker, Ms. Cynthia Moore, sixth grade science teacher. Cynthia was nominated by Gracie Good and Anthony Schaff. Ms. Cynthia Moore has been an extraordinary force in my transition to Gulf Shore City Schools. From day one, she's eagerly shared resources, patiently answered my questions, and offered unwavering support. Her kindness and genuine care have made all the difference in helping me feel at home. Then, as a cornerstone of teacher leadership at Gulf Shores Middle School, Mrs. Moore exemplifies excellence. Her ability to analyze instructional challenges and plan strategically inspires everyone under her. Under her leadership alongside Tori Erdesi, the sixth grade team achieved a remarkable 12% increase in proficiency within just one year. While the data is impressive, her true strength lies in the way she makes every individual, safe and students alike, feel supported... Improv... Sorry. Every individual, staff, and students alike feel supported and valued. With snacks for morale, wise counsel for guidance, and a welcoming space for comfort, I'm sure you've seen her room, Mrs. Moore fosters both academic growth and community well-being. Thank you, Mrs. Moore, for your tireless dedication, your empathetic leadership, and the way you lift everyone in our school with you.
Congratulations. Our high school recipient is going to be honored by Mrs. Dale Jernigan.
This is for my good friend Sandy Dempsey, or officially Sandra. Come on up. Sandy was nominated by Dr. Caroline Hamilton. She is an exceptional educator, serving as the math department chair and the unofficial but highly effective staff spirit leader at Gulf Shores. Known for her boundless energy and creativity, she transforms math lessons into dynamic, hands-on experiences where students just don't learn, don't just learn, they move, create, and explore. Her passion for making every classroom moment meaningful shines through in all she does, inspiring both students and colleagues alike. As a new teacher, I've especially valued Sandy's mentorship. Her thoughtful advice, practical guidance, and timely words of encouragement like the simple but powerful "You've Got This" have made a lasting impact on my own teaching journey. Sandy's leadership, enthusiasm, and unwavering dedication truly make her the heart of our school community.
Congratulations. All right, and as our custom, we have department heads and others come forward to educate the Board of Education on certain aspects of our school system. And tonight, we are pleased to welcome our Fine Arts Director, and that is Mr. William Mixon. Mr. Mixon, you have the floor. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present on behalf of the Fine Arts with the Gulf Shores City Schools. As many of you know, Fine Arts is a cornerstone of our students' educational experience. Beyond music, theater, and art, these programs help our students develop confidence, creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking, skills that extend well past the stage or classroom. Our students are achieving at high levels, engaging in unique learning experiences, and proudly representing our community across the stage and beyond. Today, I'll walk you through a few updates from our Fine Arts areas, band, choir, theater, visual arts, elementary music, and music technology. So, you can see not only the accomplishments, but also the exciting opportunities that lie ahead. Before I dive into the specifics of program updates, I wanted to pause and highlight why Fine Arts education is so important to our students and to our schools. The arts provide more than performances, concerts, and exhibits. They build skills that last a lifetime. Through music, theater, and visual arts, students learn creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration. They practice discipline through rehearsal and refinement, and they gain confidence by presenting their work to an audience. We also know from research that students that participate in the Fine Arts are more engaged in school, achieve higher academically, and develop stronger problem-solving abilities. Beyond academics, the arts foster empathy, communication, and cultural awareness, qualities that prepare our students to be leaders and active citizens. Here at Gulf Shore City Schools, we're committed to making sure every child has access to these opportunities. Whether it's performing onstage, creating in a studio, or learning to record in a professional lab, our students are developing skills that prepare them not only for success in schools, but also college, careers, and life. With that foundation in mind, I'd like to share a few updates on our Fine Art areas, band, choir, theater, visual arts, elementary music, and music technology. Our marching band is off to a great start this year with the largest ensemble in school history. This is a very cool theme for us. We had to upgrade to four school buses to get to a football game. So, that's exciting and a great place to be. Just don't ask the Saraland folks where to park them. That was fun. This fall's production, "The Wicked Witch," features music from the Broadway hit "Wicked." In December, both our middle school and high school bands will hold their winter concerts. And students are preparing for district and all-state auditions that will take place in January. This spring, the band will travel to Disney World to participate in an immersive recording workshop. And this is actually a joint experience with our choir and theater programs. Our choir program has seen incredible growth, especially at the middle school level, where enrollment has nearly doubled from 42 to 77 students. The choir has already performed the National Anthem at the Gulf Shores City Schools Institute and continues recruitment through the club fair. Upcoming highlights include the middle school Veterans Day Assembly, all-state auditions that will take place in November, and the winter concert on December 16th. Choir students will also continue their tradition of community service by performing at Seagrass Village for the Gulf Shores Give Back Day. Our theater program is building momentum with competitions, performances, and a major upcoming production. This year, students will present Stephen Sodheim's "Into the Woods," a large-scale collaboration with every Fine Art area at the high school. We're thrilled to also welcome Broadway veteran Chuck Wagner, who was one of the original cast members in "Into the Woods." He's going to come here and present clinics for our students as well as a benefit concert on March 14th. Our high school visual arts students are taking their creativity out of the classroom. This fall, they'll travel to New Orleans to visit the New Orleans Museum of Art, where they'll experience works by Picasso, Renoir, Monet, and Pollock. Students are also entering prestigious competitions, including the Shrimp Festival Art Contest, Congressional Art Contest, and the Scholastic National Art Contest. Continuing with the visual arts over at the middle school, our students recently participated in a glow art project, creating collaborative collage murals under blacklight to showcase their house animals. Looking ahead, they'll compete in the Vanishing Point Global Art Competition, which challenges students to use art as a voice for animal conservation. At the elementary level, music remains a vibrant part of our students' education. This November, our third graders will lead the annual Veterans Day Program in partnership with NJ ROTC and the high school band. Later in the spring, the Dolphin Sound Performers will present Madagascar, a musical adventure. That'll be taking place May 4th through 6th at the Cultural Center. And music technology, or our music technology program, is one of the most innovative in the state. In the high school hangout music lab, students compose, record, and produce their own music at professional workstations. Beyond the classroom, these students gain real-world experience by designing and running sound for pep rallies and other major school events. They're building skills that prepare them for both college and industry opportunities. So, as you can see, the Fine Arts with Gulf Shore City Schools is thriving. Each area is providing life-changing opportunities for our students, from performing on some of the biggest stages to traveling for cultural experiences to creating art that speaks to the world around them. What's even more important is that these programs are interconnected. Our students in band, choir, theater, and art are learning to collaborate across disciplines. They're building experiences together that mirror the real world, where teamwork, creativity, and communication is essential. And none of this would be possible without the support of you, our Board of Education, our school leadership, and our Fine Arts faculty. On behalf of our students, I want to sincerely thank you for prioritizing the arts and recognizing their importance in developing well-rounded learners. We look forward to continuing to grow these programs and to showcasing their incredible talents with our Gulf Shore students. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mixon, thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I mean, just going through that and hearing you talk about the arts program, it just, I am so excited and so enthusiastic about what is coming, what is happening. I mean, just to hear the cross-curriculum that is occurring on top of these amazing social skills and just community outreach that you're doing within this entire division, it's just really fantastic. And I know not just are students benefiting from it, but our community is and our school system as a whole. Just amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mixon, I'll say real quick, since you've moved to the position where you're doing, and I think y'all all know this, he's responsible for the Fine Arts program district-wide. It's really amazing how each program continues to grow, and we do appreciate your leadership.
Thank you so much.
And if you get a tour of the new high school, you'll realize our commitment to Fine Arts moving into the future. The new high school has dedicated significant square footage because we realize the value of Fine Arts in a well-rounded student. And you're a big part of that.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to some exciting topics like legal fees. Item 3A on our agenda is legal fees. Dr. Aiken, you have the floor.
So, you have the legal fees in your packet. This month, or last month, the number of hours was 11.7. Total amount, $2,572.50. So, at the board meeting next week, I will be recommending approval.
Are there any questions for Dr. Aiken as it relates to the legal fees invoice in front of you in your board packet? Seeing none, we'll look forward to voting on that item next week. Now, item 3B is our financial report. Mr. Green, turn your microphone on. You have the floor.
All right, so the report that you have is for the month of July. You have attached your financial statements, copy of your check register, the bank statement reconciliations. Once approved next week, these will be uploaded to the public's on our website. The general fund balance as of July 31st was approximately $15.4 million. If you notice the graph at the bottom, we're starting that downward trend that you see pretty much every year. And it's typical, and that's just because of the amount of property taxes that we, or abhorrent taxes, we collect in the winter months. And then you start seeing that local revenue kind of trickle down towards the end of the year. As of the end of August, our countywide abhorrent collections were up 24% or $1.2 million. District was up 11%, which is a $403,000 sales tax, up 18%, which is $1.3 million. We've collected 100% of our budgeted countywide abhorrent taxes and 101% of our budgeted district abhorrent. So, what that means is we're going, we will have more revenue from abhorrent and district abhorrent than we have budgeted. So, that's a good thing. The interest revenue for the fiscal year is approximately $258,000. We've expended 70, we've expended 75% of our amended budget, and we're 83% through the fiscal year. Keep in mind that we did issue a large check to the city, and I'll go over that in just a second. And you'll see those numbers close in to be more in line with budget starting in August. We have approximately 5.29 months of operating reserve, 8.73 months unrestricted operating reserve, and 13.8 months operating reserve, if you include our reserves that we have in debt service. Once again, I just talked about the check to the city. That was approximately $4.6 million. And the breakdown of that is $4.3 million of that was to the cover practice facility. And then we had a little over $100,000 worth of the upgraded turf where we put the logos and stuff in the end zone to match what we have at the Sportsplex. And then the remainder of that $4.6 million was the security grant that we received last year that we used, we paid audio enhancement with. There's a matching component to that. And so, we sent an additional about $200,000 to the city to go towards RJ Young. And RJ Young are the ones that's putting the security systems in our new high school. So, that's, we sent that money just to be able to match those grant funds to the city because the audio enhancement wasn't, it didn't fulfill all of the matching requirements when we did that. The capital fund balance as of July was $1.2 million. We have, and actually, they sent it this week, but we have 25% of more of state capital revenue to collect. And like I said, they sent that this week. So, that'll be reflected in your September report. You also have attached your CMP financial report. The fund balance as of July was $123,000, which is 1.17 months operating reserve. The state requires us to have one month. And those summer months are, that operating reserve trickles down because we're not really, we're not collecting that increased revenue, or that, all that CMP federal reimbursement revenue. We're just collecting some from our summer feeding program. So, that was typical, and you'll see that kind of go up a little bit until September. You also have your principals' reports attached for July, as well as your utilities' report and your board's budget-to-actual report. Any questions regarding the financial report?
Any questions for Mr. Green? We'll be voting on this item next week. Just a reminder, I didn't announce it at the front end, but a work session is meant for us to discuss these items that will be up for deliberation and vote next week. There is no voting that takes place during our work session meetings. So, that's why we're not taking any action. With that said, we're going to move on to item 8, I'm sorry, 3BA. 3BA. Authorization to expend funds, AGI repair. Who's handling this item?
I'll handle it.
All right, Dr. Aiken?
So, we have received a quote from AGI Repair Incorporated. They do repairs on MacBook's. And the reason we needed that quote is the Apple contract for repairs expires after three years. Typically, we would trade them in after three years, but our computers are still in good condition, so we're going to keep them one more year. But we do, we did feel like we need a contract for repairs. So, I will be recommending next week that you approve the contract with AGI Repair in the amount of $63,189. That's for the 1,071 MacBook's used by students at the high school. The, that amount is over my threshold of $40,000 that I can approve without board approval. So, therefore, I will be recommending approval next week. It's just a one-year contract.
So, this is approximately $60 plus per MacBook is for unlimited repairs. Virtually, virtually, it's an unlimited warranty for them, right?
It is. So, it's a pretty good deal.
So, maybe they cracked the screen.
Yeah, we did discuss that with Joey at length, and he said we're well over that with repairs, repair cost. And we were kind of analyzing whether to get this year, one-year contract or pay the repairs as needed. But we've been well over that amount. So, this is probably the most financial, the financial risk.
Loss is not included. But, and just one thing, the board, you may not remember, but the first time we bought MacBook's, we used AGI as a repair company just because they were cheaper at the time. And then Apple's price came down. But Apple's price for the fourth year is pretty high, so we feel good about this.
They want you to get new ones.
They do.
And so, we're looking at in the end of next year to replace...
Right, starting at the 26th school year, we'll get new MacBook's.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Green or Dr. Aiken on this matter? Next, we'll go authorization to expend funds, Apple Incorporated.
So, so this is, we've received a quote from Apple for 40 MacBook Pro computers. And they have a four-year service contract with them. You noticed the last one's had three, these have four. But this is for our 21st Century program. So, we are closing out that grant, and we had this money budgeted. Again, it's over the $40,000 threshold, so I'll be recommending approval next week.
Any questions for Dr. Aiken as it relates to this matter?
21st Century, it's at the...
It's an after-school learning grant.
In the elementary? Is it still running?
Middle school, is that right, Chad?
It's at the middle school? Okay.
All right. Item 3BC is authorization to expend funds, Ward International. Dr. Aiken, you have the floor.
Might I do it? Chad, you want me to do this one, or you want to do it? I'd jump in. So, we've received a quote from Ward International for a new special needs bus. As our, as years go by, our bus ridership continues to increase. So, the quote is in the amount of $159,448.25. This price includes a 10-year, 120,000-mile extended warranty, a five-year air conditioning warranty, video system and lettering. So, we have fleet renewal money and capital money that we're going to... So we have fleet renewal money and capital money that we're going to use to purchase this bus. It's already been budgeted. The good news is the bus is in stock, so a lot of times these buses take seven, eight months to get in, so we'll get it in sooner. And most importantly, we'll have it in, because we know, we don't necessarily have to have it this year. It's going to help us, but we are going to need it next year. So again, I will be recommending that the board approve that purchase next week. It is, we don't have to bid it because it's on the Sourcewell contract.
Any questions for Dr. Aiken as it relates to this matter?
Yeah, that's correct, because we'll run, we're working on it, but we'll have, we anticipate separate routes for the high school and then, and then separate routes for elementary and middle.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on. Item 3C, Human Resources. 3CA is Personnel Recommendations. Dr. Aiken, you have the floor.
So we'll, you have the personnel packet in your, in your, attached to your agenda. We'll actually be recommending these tonight at the, at the special meeting. So there are two resignations, three recommendations for employment, one leave of absence, and then all of our 17 teams contracts to be approved.
That was my next question. It says teams contract above the middle school, but all the high school positions listed are also teams contracts.
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, without besmirching the good name and reputation of those individuals in your board packet, are there any questions for Dr. Aiken as it relates to personnel? And as Dr. Aiken alluded, we will be calling a special call immediately following this in order to authorize those personnel recommendations. With that said, we have a couple contracts to consider. The first of which is Aviation Maintenance Technician Mentor. Dr. Aiken, you have the floor.
And this one, we have one aviation maintenance mentor, and this is another one that is certified to do mechanic repair. So this contract is $10,000 per year. They show up every day for every class, so it's certainly, certainly a good expenditure, I believe, for our students. So the contract will begin October 1 and go through the September 30th, and I will recommend that next week.
Any questions for Dr. Aiken as it relates to the Aviation Maintenance Technician Mentor?
So over the summer as well, are there classes out there over the summer in aviation?
Well, we're really, it's just kind of like teachers don't work during the summer, but basically we're putting money in escrows, so they're making a little bit more money than that per month. And sometimes, it just depends if we have enough to make a class, and also depends on Haley's availability, so we may or may not.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is the Contract for the Flight Simulator Instructor, and I think you have an alumni to consider here. Dr. Aiken, you have the floor.
Y'all all know who this is, and it's just a continuation. Cody's been doing this for a couple of years, does a great job with our students out at the airport and at the elementary and middle schools. So I will be recommending that contract at $25 an hour next week.
Very good. I can't tell you how, when I get started talking to outsiders about our aviation program, and we talk about it at the high school level, and I said, well, at the middle school, we actually have an aviation program graduate who is now a pilot, is our middle school flight simulator, and people are blown away that we take our aviation program all the way down into the middle school level. It's a great program and well worth it, and congratulations to Cody.
It really is, and Cody does a great job.
With that said, if anybody else has anything, we'll move on to item 3BD, Academic, I'm sorry, Athletic Supplements. Dr. Aiken?
So in your packet, you have a breakdown of athletic supplements by sport. The total athletic supplements, $785,658, which is actually, Chad and I spent a good deal of time going over this with Coach Watts. And Chad, I don't remember, but it's less than $1,000 higher than it was last year. So I will be recommending the approval of those supplements next week. I said $1,000 less. I think it's $1,000 more than last year.
I think it was like $100 more.
Hundred, yeah.
All right.
That's why you're keeping up with the money, a hundred and a thousand.
And any questions for Dr. Aiken as it relates to these items? Keeping in mind that all these will be voted on at our next meeting, one week from today. With that said, we're going to move to Capital Projects, Construction Updates. Chad, how's the Wave Center for Learning coming along? Microphone, please.
Pretty good. Most of the stuff, there's still a few punch things to do, but the main thing left to do right now is getting the exterior signage, and then we're going to have some signage right under this TV right here behind you. And so we're getting all that ordered. But for the most part, it's coming along. We have not gotten our CO yet, because they did have to make some adjustments to the stairs back here in the back. But yeah, it's getting close. Yeah.
Frank? Very good. We're going to move next to High School Update according to the visual screen. Is that Mr. Hand? Noel, please come forward.
Yeah, we're to run the project, but I really want to reach out for, to Lee Jones and John Walker, you know, the city administrator, because the driveway coming into the site, coming into a, you know, pedestrian walkway and just something that people are used to, is to be able to separate the landscaping, just so there was no confusion of mixing pedestrians with vehicles. So I'd just like to reach out to them, just tell them thank you for just reiterating that. And then it looks fantastic.
It does look fantastic. It's like everything else in the city. It really looks good. And it didn't have to look good, so we really appreciate it.
Absolutely, it does. So moving on to, for the, for the high school. So right now, we're, we are working with the, on Coastal Gateway Boulevard for the turn lanes to be able to get in. We're getting material in for the signal. We're moving, relocating Auburn's driveway to realign with the signal to be able, so it will be all one signalized intersection for Auburn and the future sites for the future possibly sportsplex to the north of there. So, there we go. So everybody's seen this for a while now, so just the schematics with the art and sped and the, you know, just in case somebody's watching online, you know, the A2 in the green is administrative area. A3 is the media center. A4 would be the culinary arts, and 5 will be the hangout studio. Musical arts, 6, the facility support, and A7, so if you can follow along through there, and the fieldhouse. C1, and then we have the competition gym, and B1, and B2 is the auxiliary gym. So there we go. Oh, that's big. So the, the practice pavilion, it's a lot bigger than, so that, everything is hung, so now they are working on the roofing material now, so we're proud of that going forward. Getting a lot of headway. And so this is the media arts center, so we're still continuing with the metal panels with the media center, culinary arts, and musical arts in this area.
Hey Noel, we get a lot, while you're on that exterior picture, we get a lot of questions about the exterior color scheme. If it's not blue, we're looking at the finish colors, pretty much.
That is correct. I think, Matt, is that right, Mexican sand?
I think, I think that's, that is correct.
Yes.
And when you say it's not blue, if it's not the, we do have some navy blue on the building, and that's, that's actual color, but all this bright blue will be, will be changed.
Absolutely. And so we're moving on to, so this is the area in where you see the divider walls that we had to be able to expand the classrooms into the hallways. So that, and we got the lights energized, so a lot of, a lot of trades are going on right now. I'm sorry, I lost my spot right there. So this is still another, for the media, and that's, I believe, the entrance going into the site. It looks so much different on this huge screen. Some, we had some issues with here, but we got all those resolved with the, with the mechanical. This is the fieldhouse, which is C1, so if you kind of see the pavilion, the practice pavilion, the columns. So this is the actual workout room there, so we're having just steel, mechanical, electrical plumbing, rough ends. And we're doing that in the storm shelter and the fieldhouse as well, so it's going on.
I believe they're starting on the, we were just in there this week, and I believe they're starting on the paint in there next week, so it's making quick progress.
Yeah, it moves pretty quick. You almost have to make daily pictures out there. So there's more overhead steel hallways, still working on sheet rocking mud. It's just, it's an ongoing process, and so it's more exterior work. This was actually a picture from, from the water. You see, this was, I think, two weeks ago with this picture. This is auxiliary, the auxiliary gym, remember that correctly? With the competition, this competition gym, and so then bathrooms are being worked on. This is the connector and the learning stairs that connects the building together. This is an...
That's competition gym.
Is that the theater?
No, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, it is theater.
That's the theater.
Yep, so there's the inside of the theater. I believe you're on the stage, looking towards the west, towards the seating. So this is actually a sneak peek to the bathroom walls. They're turned out really, really well. And so this is going, help me out, Matt.
That's the outside of the theater.
Outside theater, and then you're the main.
And then to the left is maintenance entry. To the right, your right is the main student entry.
Yep. So this is the second floor of media center.
Above the great hall.
Yep, of the great hall. Hangout music.
Yeah, so this is looking from the hangout music lab, or towards the hangout music lab. So this is a hallway that goes from the main admin building over to Fine Arts and the gymnasiums.
Now, so you can see the learning stairs on the other side of the breezeway. So there's some epoxy flooring that's, that's going down in the culinary arts, so that's going really, really well. And so hood right there. There's the stage, so standing up there near the learning center of looking east, I believe. And yeah, of course, it's looking east. And the hangout music studio there to your right with the garage doors. It's hood system. Which they've been really, doing a great job and expecting of, of that. So this is the terrazzo floor install, so it is ongoing. This is, help me out.
Great, great hallway.
Yep, great hallway. I didn't want to call it the great lawn, because that's what we had at the beach, so great hallway. And this is the auxiliary gym on the west side of the, not competition gym going into the main entrance.
That's correct.
That's not me.
That's the kayak, the kayak area at the new high school.
But however, that's all I have on a picture, so, but if anybody has any questions, but just one more thing though, just still, I know I've reiterated this many times before, but this Rayburn, the contractor, is just phenomenal and reaches out whenever we want to be able to have teachers come up and look at rooms, and they don't really have to do that, but they're a really good partner as to be able to have all the tours and just how organized they are. And I really want to say thank you too to Nathan Hancock with Volker and Associates with the program management. He eats, sleeps, and breathes this.
Nathan, they're doing, they really are extremely accommodating. Under the category of cruel and humane, inhumane punishment, we took senior ambassadors through the building this past week to see the building they weren't going to be in next year. But we felt it was, we felt it was important for the ambassadors to be able to convey to folks that do come visit the excitement about the new school. We did have a few underclassmen in there, but some of the seniors were like, whoa.
Yeah, it's massive. I mean, it is a massive facility.
It's incredible. Every nook and cranny is just wonderful. That's what I said, y'all are seniors.
But, but to their credit, they've also started a shared page where they're sharing their ideas and things they really liked and the things we need to consider. And so they have a lot of nice insight that they're sharing with Mr. Webb and others, Dr. Webb, not Mr. Webb, sorry about that. So it really is beneficial for us to see them, but it's also really nice to walk in and for them to walk through and see the smiles.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Noel. What else are we going to update? Anything else in the construction standpoint? If not, we'll move on to superintendent updates. Who's going first?
Dr. Harrison has the floor.
Dr. Harrison. Turn your mic on, please.
All right. I just wanted to give you a couple of updates about the learning that's going on. We've been in school for a little over a month now, and our teachers do amazing things, and you know that. But here's an example of some learning happening at the middle school. Mr. Schoff and Ms. Morales took some students out in our new kayaks, so they were able to kayak in Lake Shelby, which was exciting, and the city provided a lifeguard for us, so that was wonderful. And then another picture, this is a math class at the high school. This is Mrs. Jones' math class. And we don't always talk about math as being exciting, but the teachers at the high school do a great job of getting the students moving around, and they problem solve in groups, and it's really exciting. Lots of learning, of course, going on at the elementary school, but I am saving those pictures for Dr. Early to share next week because she will give her update then.
All right, anything else from the superintendents?
One, one, a couple more on, just on one slide. This is not near as exciting as kayaking. But just so, to remind everyone, September is Attendance Awareness Month. I know all the principals know that, and have been doing a really good job of getting information out and really stressing to parents how important being, being at school every day. And it's really, if you look at the chart, you know, if you're, if you're there 90% of the time, that means you've missed 19 school days. So it's important that the kids are at school every day, and I appreciate what each one of you are doing to make, to really emphasize that for our parents to realize how important it is. Just a quick enrollment update, there hasn't really been a whole lot of change since the last meeting, but the elementary school as of today, this includes pre-K, is 1,179 students. Last year, we were at 12,66. Middle school, 634, they were at 603. So Jamie has, has a few more students. And then the high school at 903, so they're down about 20 students. A lot of that is, as you know, we changed our out-of-district policy, and Dr. Neff is doing a great job of communicating with parents. And Randy Carlisle is going out and checking addresses, so we're trying to be consistent and fair with that policy. So just so you'll know, last year at this time, we were at 2,862 students, and now we're at 2,716. And a lot of that has to do with making sure we're enforcing our district limits, but also we really cut down on, on out-of-district enrollment just because of the capacity. So that's all I have. I want to say one other thing. The, we had our admin professional development yesterday, and I don't do a good enough job of bragging on what's going on. They really had the toughest jobs in the school system, the principals do. And, but they've done a good job, all three of them have at different times, just sharing about what's going on in our schools. And specifically, I think I shared this with the board about, Missy Everett shared with us about a new school, new student that was at the high school, and how she was smiling, and you know, it's going to a new high school, or changing high schools as a student is a stressful experience, and how much, how happy she was and how, how much she enjoyed being in a school. And that doesn't happen because of the furniture or the walls. That happens because of the people that are there. And it starts at the top with, with all three of you, but it goes all the way down. And so the commitment level of all of our employees beyond academics and test scores, I believe, is what makes us who we are, and so I'm really proud of that.
Kevin, can I give one more capital update?
Sure.
So last week, as you know, Jessica Sampley got all the sailboats through a grant program. And we met with, Jessica and I met with the city out at Mo's Landing, and we developed a plan, and they're in the design stage to put a facility out there for storing those sailboats at Mo's Landing. So just want to give an update if you guys hear about that. But, so hopefully that process is going to get started pretty soon. It'll be great for, you know, storage, but obviously the access to the water right there will be great for our, for our staff and students.
How did you hear that? That was really hard, for the teachers. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I heard it was very hard, very hard, and the weather got really windy, is what I was told.
I didn't get to go on this one, but I have been through some of that before, and it is really difficult. I'm looking forward to the next one. Sampley told me that sometime, you know, one of the upcoming trainings.
Well, I mean, the instructor program, they were, they were like eight to four for several days. I mean, it was a lot of work and, and I'm proud of those teachers that stepped up and wanted to be a part of that program. Anything else before we conclude our work session? Um, if anyone needs a, uh, facilities break, now would be the time. Otherwise, I'm going to suggest we move directly into our meeting. Everybody good with that? Joey, are you good with that?
Did you want to go over the upcoming meeting days?
We can indeed. Um, our upcoming meeting is in 30 seconds. We're going to have a special called meeting. And after that, next week, we will be right here in this same venue at 5:00 PM to vote on the discussion items that we had today. We are having a special called meeting now in order to handle two items. The first of which will be personnel recommendations that we discussed earlier. And next will be, um, the first of our two required budget hearings. So with that said, um, if everybody's okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 4:47 PM, Joey.
So noted.
And as our custom, we're going to take a moment to reflect and I, I, I ask that y'all, please keep the Aiken family as we, as we reflect now, um, in, in your sincere thoughts. So let's go ahead and reflect for just a moment before we move forward. Now, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Joey, if you'll please call the roll.
President Corcoran.
I am here.
Dr. Gotchaw.
I'm here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Malone.
Here.
Mrs. Jernigan.
Here.
We'll note that all five board members are present as well as both superintendents, our CSFO and our acting secretary, uh, Joey Drews is with us as well. So with that said, we're going to move immediately into the adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to either accept the agenda as presented in your packet or, or a modification if necessary.
I move we accept the agenda as presented. Second?
Motion by Jernigan, second by Walker. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. So noted. Are there any announcements that have taken place in the last three to four minutes that wasn't mentioned? Everybody good? We'll move immediately into our two action items, the first of which is personnel recommendations. Dr. Aiken, you have the floor.
So in your packet, you have the personnel, um, recommendations that we just discussed in the work session. There have been no changes. So I recommend approval as presented.
We have before us a recommendation from the superintendent for the approval of the personnel recommendations. If everybody's comfortable, we're going to handle these all in one fell swoop. We have a, do we have a motion in the second? We do. Do we not?
We do not.
I want to entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
I move that we accept the personnel recommendation.
Second.
Motion in the second, motion by Walker, second by, um, Gotchaw. All in favor, unless there's any discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Joey, so noted. Next, um, we start with you, Dr. Aiken. We go straight to Mr. Green.
Uh, straight to Mr. Green.
All right, Mr. Green, we have a requirement for two consecutive budget hearings. This will constitute the first of those and at this point in time, you have the floor.
All right. So like Kevin. Like Kevin said, the, uh, this is, um, our first budget hearing for fiscal year '26. Our fiscal year runs October 1st to September 30th. So you can see we're closing in on, or closing, uh, closing, uh, fiscal year '25. And, um, starting October 1st, we'll be starting fiscal year '26. So. Um, I always like to go over our purpose statements and our, um, core values before we start going through the budget. Just, um, because I, I always try to keep this stuff in mind or these things in mind whenever I'm doing my budget. Um, but just a reminder, um, the purpose of Gulf Shore City Schools is provide engaging learning environments, rigorous academics, incorporate the unique resources of our community to empower all students to achieve success. And I think in the work session, you heard a lot of that already, um, of how we put that to use every day. Um, our core values on promote, promoting rigorous, comprehensive and relevant curriculum, um, that prepares students, um, to be productive citizens. Um, developing self-reliance by incorporating students, students' physical, mental, emotional, social well-being into teaching and learning environment. Fostering inclusive, engaging members of society, encouraging critical and creative thinking. Um, recruiting at the best and brightest faculty and staff, um, and rewarding innovation and collaboration. Instilling a sense of pride in our schools by engaging the Gulf Shores community in education experience. Um, we just talked about, we have to have two public hearings. So one tonight, we'll have one at the regular called meeting next week. Um, it has to be during a scheduled meeting, which we obviously scheduled this meeting with a publicized date and time. Um, provide question and response forum. So you can find, um, you can find the response forum on our website or I'll put it on our website tomorrow. Um, provide the proposed budget on the state department of education forms, which is what you guys have in your board packet. There's a big packet of about 50 pages, um, and that's the required forms that we're, um, we have to submit to the, to, for the budget hearing. Um, my numbers are probably a little dated compared to what Dr. Aiken just went over. Um, but this is what, what we were looking at, um, a couple of weeks ago on August 20th. Um, so you can see, I think your, your numbers were quite a bit lower than that, but, um, what I had was, um, about 4.75 students less than previous year. What was, what was yours again?
150ish.
It was 100 and so, so we've had, we've got some differences there and, uh, so, but these from, were from a couple of weeks ago. Uh, mine also doesn't include, uh, pre-K students. So that's a big nu- part of the number. Yeah. Um, so I always like to, uh, throw this slide in here. So the 2019 ADM, keep in mind, that was not our 2019 enrollment. That's what we were funded for by the state department and it was, um, 1,947 students. And we currently have 2,628 enrolled. So you can see that's about 680 kids, 35% increase since 2019. Personnel information, um, so the state requires me to submit this in my packet. So you can see that, but this is kind of a, a, a system-wide snapshot. Um, last year we had about, um, 300 employees. Um, this year we have 311. Um, most of that is in, in teachers with the student growth that we had in last, um, school year. Uh, but you can kind of see the breakdown of, we have 179 teachers, library, and you can see the breakdown between librarians, counselors, administrators and support staff. Uh, this is our snapshot of our total budget. So this includes your general fund, your special revenue, which includes all your federal funding, um, CMP as well as the schools' public funds. Uh, you also have your debt service, capital projects and your spendable trust fund. The spendable trust fund is the only thing that includes is your non-public funds at your three schools. So here, I won't go, I won't read these word by word, um, because I kind of just went over it, but this is kind of a, a more, um, formal breakdown of each fund, um, in each, uh, category in our financial statements. Uh, revenue sources, um, you guys are familiar with most of these. Most of them are pretty, um, annual, um, each year. Um, one thing I did want to point out in state revenue, so this will be our first fiscal year of the RACE Act. And it's what the RACE Act, that was a, that was a, um, supplemental budget or a budget that they put, put it in the education trust fund this year. They basically took out our at-risk funds that we have gotten in separate buckets in previous years and it's all in this one larger bucket. They also funded additional special ed, um, funding. So that was certainly nice to help fund some of the, uh, paras and special ed teachers. Um, but really everything else is, um, we've had in previous years. Um, and I'll go through each one of these or I'll go through some of this in detail, but. Um, expenditures by function, um, they're pretty self-explanatory. Instructional services, that's going to be mainly your teachers and instructional materials and, um, services within, um, the classrooms. And then you have your support services. Operation and maintenance is going to be self-explanatory. That's, um, and then you've got your auxiliary services. That's going to encompass your CMP and your, uh, transportation. And then you have your admin, capital LA, debt service and other expenditures. That's mainly going to be after-school programs. It's going to be pre-K programs, um, and things like that. Uh, so total budgeted revenues, um, for the, for the fiscal year. So you can see the breakdown, local revenues was 62%, other revenues 3%. Like I said, the other revenues is after-school programs. That's your, um, pre-K programs. Uh, state revenues 30%, federal revenues 5%. Um, I did want to point out, um, that last year we received 36% of our revenues was state, from the state department and 55% was local. Um, so that's a pretty significant jump from previous year. And the reason for that is our 10 mil match went up $3.6 million this year because of our, the avalorum taxes, the district avalorum taxes, um, increased significantly, um, last year.
And Chad, I'll just point out, that's a big deal.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we were talking $42 million for it to, you know, increase, what, 7%? That's a lot of money. Um, this is your, uh, total budget expenditures. It's pretty, it's identical to last year as far as the breakdown in percentage-wise. Um, salary benefits represents about 75% of our, of our budget, which is pretty normal. 75, 70 to 75, 80% um, is pretty typical with, um, within school systems. I don't really, I don't want to get over 80% because then you start losing the opportunities to provide special programs and some of the things that you heard about tonight already. General fund bu- budget, this is just the snapshots. You have your local revenues, expenditures. Um, you can see we have, are showing a surplus of approximately 474,000, um, which is a little bit lower than previous years, but was anticipated because of our 10 mil match going up so, so much. And actually, when I got the budget together, I was just hopeful that we were able to surplus because of that 10 mil match increasing so significantly in one year. All right, your foundation report from the state, um, you can see most of this is salary, is just due to growth. Um, also the state department increased P-HIP and retirement, retirement percentages went up about 1% for each tier one and tier two. So that's a significant amount. Also, P-HIP cost to the employer went from $800 a month to $904 a month. Um, so you add that with 300 and add that, so that's 10,000, a little over $10,000 for 311 employees. It's a lot of, I mean, it's a lot of money. Um, but that's the main difference. Other current expense, they, it did go up, um, per unit, a couple of thou- or about $2,000. The main reason for that was because of the increased benefit cost. Uh, they increased, uh, the student material money from $900 to $1,000 this year. Um, and then technology, library enhancement, professional development, textbooks, there was no change, um, but for, from last year. There are some small like total changes, but per unit basis, there was no change. And then common purchase, they did not do an allocation this year. In fact, last year was the first time they had done one of those since I've been a CSFO. So, um, I was not surprised for that to be zero again. Um, and then you can see our total foundation money went up about, went up $768,000. But if you factor in that 10 mil match, the total funded state, the total funded, um, state dollars actually went down 2.8 million because of the $3.6 million 10 mil match increase. Um, because you can see that, that's what was taken from our 2.8 million. That's what was taken from our local budget to go towards that match. So that's a, a significant amount. Not to harp on 10 mil match, but here's the calculation. Um, you can see the value between fiscal year '25 and 20, fiscal year '26. Um, so based on the county commission's reports, our value of one mil in Gulf Shores and, and, um, so that would have been 2024 was 861,000. The value at the end of last fiscal year was 1.2 million. So obviously that's a significant increase that factored into that $3.6 million increase.
Chad, without putting you on the, on the spot, um, this ranks us probably second in the state from a 10 mil match scenario?
Yeah, I, yes, I think we're probably the highest on a per student basis, um, with the exception of Orange Beach.
Right.
Who doesn't participate in foundations. So they don't have to worry about this issue.
When it comes to a 10 mil match, we are the highest.
Yes.
Uh, in the entire state.
Yeah, not on the total value, but on a per student basis. Yes. Yep. All right, state revenues, um, we just went over foundation. So you can see that 2.8 million dollar decreases. Um, we just talked about the RACE Act, which we just talked about as well. That was 388,000. Um, most everything is pretty minimal increases or decreases. Um, teams went up. That's just because of the additional teams, teachers that we have. Um, transportation went up, um, a good bit, um, for benefit costs, salary cost and, uh, just, I think we earned an additional route as well. And you can see the ones that went from fiscal year '25 had an allocation, fiscal year '26 is for zero. So that would include English language learning, gifted and at-risk. Those were all rolled up into that RACE Act calculation or that RACE Act allocation. Avalorum revenues, um, so, so just a reminder, the avalorum, so I get a property abstract from the county commission. And I don't know why it did not, it kind of cut off there. So sorry about that where the typing went into the chart. But, um, I get a calculation or a property abstract from the county commission and that's how I base my, um, budget. Um, I do decrease it a little bit just to be conservative and that way when we do our budget amendment, we can, we can adjust accordingly. Um, but you can see we're calculating about a 4% increase in total, um, avalorum increase next year. Uh, sales tax, um, we did increase this, um, some as well. Um, that sales tax has been strong this year. Um, hopefully it will be strong again next year. I know Baldwin County prior to COVID averaged about 5% increase each year. Um, so I'm trying to, I kind of base my calculation on that and then reduce it a little bit just to remain conservative. And you can see down at the bottom, the breakdown. So we have to do the, um, so 1.7 million dollars for our sales tax revenue has to go to the, um, the foundation match. Uh, last year we didn't have to send any sales tax money to foundation match because our avalorum covered it. But this year we're having to do avalorum as well as sales tax to cover that match.
And just to reiterate your point, I mean, that's, that's what we disagree with is they're taking more from us than we're collecting when it comes to the 10 mil match. We're not collecting that within our, within our property tax, right?
Yes, the only way to make that even is if our avalorum, our district avalorum is 10 mils and the, and we're, we're losing money on that because of our, the avalorum, a countywide avalorum is not near the same price as a district avalorum. And so is what happens since we only collect three mils in Gulf Shores, instead of factoring it on all those mils, they're only factoring on district, which then is really hurting us significantly, um, with that 10 mil match calculation. Uh, all local revenues, you can see we went over avalorum, we went over sales tax, um, tuition. The only reason there was an increase there, we talked about 21st century grant rolls off in, um, in September. So that will, that will roll into a similar setup to as the elementary has as far as tuition payments and, um, like the elementary has. So that was the only reason there's an increase there. And that tuition number, the, the actual out of district tuition is only about 120,000. The rest of that is after-school program. Um, I won't go too in detail with this, but you can see the breakdowns. I just went. I just went in expense, financial expense line item, and just kind of broke down how those were factored in in the budget. Most of that's gonna be salaries, salary benefits, especially at the instructional level, because that's all your teacher cost. Operation and maintenance, you can see the breakdown there. Auxiliary services, so that, so general fund only has transportation, because CMP is included in the federal budget, not general fund. You have your admin, which majority of it's going to salary and benefits, and then other expenditures as well, which is, you know, our after-school programs and our pre-K programs. And this is just a snapshot of our local budget and how it's being spent, and how each, where each line item, or each of our local dollars go into. Other things I want to point out, so we, these are some teachers that, and staff members that we're not, that we do not have, get state funding for, so these are coming out of our local budgets. So I just want to point out, this is some of our specialty programs that we've, that we have done in the past, and we continue to do, that have been a benefit to our school system, that we think is worth spending local dollars on. So you can see some of those, most of, some of them are pretty standard, but you do have, you know, Spanish teachers, the elementary, aviation teachers, virtual teachers, choir. We do have, we are, have more assistant principals than we are funded by the state. And just, you can see kind of those breakdowns there, in some of the programs that we fund locally. All right, all that to get to the bottom line. So here, so this is our general fund snapshot. Keep in mind, like, when we do our budgets, the fiscal year twenty-five fund balance, that is not actual. That is just kind of a estimate, because I don't know where we will stand until really the end of October. But you can see how it's broken out, total revenues, total expenditures, to come the surplus, four hundred and seventy-four thousand. And then you get, you calculate the fund balance and reserves down at the bottom of about three point two million. Keep in mind, that's a conservative estimate, because we won't adjust it to actual until our budget amendment. And then if you add debt service into that calculation, you can see the breakdowns, but that brings us to about a little over five months operating reserve, when you're including debt service. And just keep in, remember that the state only requires one month reserve in general fund, so we're exceeding that. And so I also did a calculation based on our unrestricted fund balance, so basically backing out all of our state funds and just looking at our local budget. And we're almost a conservative estimate, almost eleven months in unrestricted operating balance. And then we have our debt service. These are all standard, these are all been here in the past. I will make a point that we made our last final Apple lease payment last, in this fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So we will not have an Apple lease payment in twenty-six. Our plan is to do a device refresh next summer, and then you'll see another lease payment in fiscal year twenty-seven. But that's a two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that was removed from our debt service account. All right, special revenue, so you have your Title I, Title II, Title IV, your sped, sped pre-K, Perkins, which is career tech, Title III, which is new this year. In the past, we have not received enough money to get that allocation, but this year, we exceeded that, so we will receive Title III funds this year for the first time. And that's just for ELA stuff, or ELA teachers, supplies, child nutrition, and then public funds at the local school level. So you can see the breakdown here of our special, special revenue fund. Most of it's not too big a change. Title I did decrease significantly. Twenty-first century, that's our middle school grant that's rolling off. We did not get that grant again for next year, so that, we will not get that funding. And so those are the biggest changes. All right, and here is your CMP analysis report for this past school year. You can see that we served one hundred and seventeen thousand breakfasts, two hundred and thirty-four thousand lunches, fifty-eight hundred summer, twenty, almost twenty-six thousand snacks, so three hundred and eighty-three thousand total meals served. And that equated to seven hundred and thirty-four thousand in federal reimbursement, thirty-nine thousand dollars in sales. I will point out, so the sales, we, we receive sales for second meals, essentially, is the only thing that we get. So CEP will cover first meal, they will not cover second meal. So if your kid's getting two lunches, they're gonna pay for the second one, so that's mainly what that is. All right, almost done. So we have our capital fund as well, so you can see that was increased about seventy thousand. Most of that was because of the local match, so there's a formula for local match, so our value, the property value went up, so our local match went up as well. Capital fund expenditures, so you have our insurance for all of the buildings, which is about three hundred thousand. And then school bus, which we just approved, so this will help us purchase a couple of school buses. And then you got building improvements. Debt service is the two school buses we purchased the very first year that we were, before we had any reserves built up. So we, we did two buses that very first year alone for those, so. You can see our estimated fund balance at the end of the budget is a nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in the capital fund. And that's it. Any questions? I do, we will have the response form available, you can email it to me, and just make sure you provide your name and address and phone number, where I can respond accordingly. So any questions from the board?
Chad, if you could be prepared next week to talk about the breakdown of our fleet, I'd appreciate it, I'm not gonna put you on the spot today, but if you could talk about the breakdown of our fleet, as far as those that are qualifying for ten-year newer, those that are air-conditioned, things like that, I think that would be of interest to the population, to let people know about that.
Okay, I can get Randy to get me that.
Next week, let's talk about that if we can. Any questions for Mr. Green? Does this constitute our first budget hearing? Once again, Chad's inviting the public for any comments or questions they may have this coming week. Will be the time to do that via the appropriate format. Yes, ma'am? This constitutes the first one, we're gonna do the second one on the eighteenth. Anyone have any questions? I've been informed by Joey that we have no public comment from our virtual audience. Is there anyone here that has sat through these meetings that wishes to come forward? We'd love to hear your input, this is your city and your school. What do y'all think of our new digs? Good stuff? All right. Couple reminders, middle school football is going on right now, I think, six o'clock. We, I'm sorry? First home game against the Toros. We also have, we have varsity football tomorrow night at home against McGill Tulane. The football players are honoring Dylan Aiken, and will be wearing a special DA sticker on the back of their helmets. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be a special night as well. We encourage everybody to come out to the Mick. We remind you that we have swapped the home and away stands. We had an administrative meeting to discuss those changes that that brought about, and I think you're gonna see a much smoother traffic pattern coming up for this home game after we had a few growing pains in the first one, but we're gonna, we're gonna see that improved. Grant Brown and Coach Watts and everybody are working hard to come up with some great solutions, along with Jeff Hopkins. So things to look about, can't say enough about volleyball, just absolutely killing it. I won't try to get into a whole athletic report, because I'll miss some of them.
Volleyball is ranked number two in the state.
And they are right now playing, JV is playing Spanish Fort as we speak, at Spanish Fort, and varsity starts at five thirty. And that's an important game for us.
Yep, those are expected to be the first two in the, in the region. With that said, is there anybody here that wants to come forward?
Kevin, just one other thing, we thank Chad, but Joey's behind the wall, but Joey's spent a lot of time putting this whole audiovisual system together, and it's really, really working well. So thank you, Joey, for all you did, and all you did.
All right, the Wizard of Oz. Joey, you have anything for us?
No, sir.
All right. With that said, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Gotchel, second by Walker, that we adjourn. Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. So noted, thank you, everyone, we'll see you right here next week at five o'clock. Go Dolphins.